I spoke to me. Well, no, hopefully we're weird.
They didn't even look at me and said, well, you never mentioned that.
I just think, oh, give it one more try.
And they stopped with the building down there for you.
I'm glad Lisa.
Why don't we get it back in?
I don't know.
It's six o'clock, so we go ahead and get started. As customary, we have a word of prayer, and I've asked Commissioner Brown if he would lead us in this prayer at this time.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord, and bringing us together, Lord, in this place, be with tonight as we conduct county business. We just thank you for this county that we live in, all the people that make it up, Lord, and citizens. We just thank you, Lord, for our mothers, that we remember Mother's Day this past weekend and everything that they do for us, be with us tonight. May we do everything pleasing to you, and may your will be done through us, Lord, and we ask this all in your son's precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for our pleads allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. We'll call the Tuesday, May 14th, Hart County Board of Commissioners' Meeting to Order, May 14th, 2024. First on the agenda, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or watching on HTC Channel 3 or on our YouTube channel. We appreciate you tuning in tonight. First order of business is to approve the agendas. Are there any additions?
I don't have any changes.
Any commissioners have anything?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. So we'll move on to approved minutes. The previous meeting of April 23rd, 2024. Any additions or corrections in those? If not, can we get a motion to approve minutes as written?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. We'll move on down to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. We do have with us tonight Mr. Larry Cole from the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and if you would come forth at this time, Mr. Cole.
Well, thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
The Auxiliary is actually the volunteer uniform arm of the Coast Guard. So we're basically the Coast Guard here on Lake Hartwell. A lot of people don't even realize that we're here. We do a lot of things that you don't even know about, but we work hard to try to keep the lakes safe. That's our number one thing, and we're not an enforcement group, although we can call the DNR right quick and they do respond. But our mission is to try to keep people from getting a ticket on the water. And after COVID, it seems like everybody and his brother got a boat and headed up here to Hartwell. We've had a lot of traffic since then, and we have people that don't have a clue as to how to operate a boat. So that's why we're trying to get more training out. We have these boating safety classes. And by the way, if you were born after 1998, the Georgia side, the class is mandatory, and I think they're going to start this year, pardon me, enforcing that. We've seen several times when young people had no clue what they were doing in a boat and other people that rented them and have no clue really and truly what they're doing. So hopefully, the boating safety classes will help. If we can get six people together, then we can put a class together. So that's kind of the minimum. We've had some here. We're starting to have classes here in Hartwell, which is my hometown, instead of going to Anderson all the time. Most, all of our activities have been on that South Carolina side, and I'm trying to change that. So if you all would know some people or yourselves interested at all in the boating safety class, please let me know. My phone number and contact information is right there. So we're pleased to be here, be on the water, and we're happy to help. We also have Channel 16. I'd like to mention that. Channel 16 is monitored a good bit by the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and we pretty much cover the lake with that. So if you have a marine radio, Channel 16 is really a better way of getting help than even cell phones. So make use of Channel 16. I've talked to the marinas, and several of the marinas are saying now that, well, at least the new group have agreed to go ahead and monitor it. So we get them monitoring 16, and the DNR will be in good shape. So with that, any questions from anybody that, since I'm here?
Where will the class be at?
Well, we will have it probably in the bottom of the library, there at the Adult Learning Center, most likely. And we've even, one time, I almost had a class here using your facility. So it's wherever we can find the accommodations at that time. Hopefully, we'll get a note and set up right away and can get out exactly the time of it. So at the moment, we don't have, the next one for Hartwell. We have some others, but not for Hartwell yet. Okay? Any other questions? Yes, sir.
You revenue that frequency rather than this Channel 16, so you're going to monitor it on a stream?
The Coast Guard's on Channel 22 Alpha and 83, but don't get on 83. You can get on 22 Alpha if you want. But what we call the active-duty Coast Guard is on 83, and they monitor that a good bit, actually. Anything else? Okay, well, again, I appreciate being here and certainly the proclamation. I think somebody's going to give me a copy of that. I'm not sure. If not, I probably can pull up one of your minutes.
Yeah, we'll read this proclamation off and then vote on it, and then I think Ms. Lisa will have you a copy of it.
Okay, very good. Yeah, are you going to read it? Then great. Thank you.
All right. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important life-saving tips for recreational boaters so they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas, on average, 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Therefore, Hart County Board of Commissioners does hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May the 18th through the 24th, 2024, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of year-round effort to promote safe boating. In witness thereof, I urge all those who vote to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating, given under my signature and the seal of the County of Hart this 14th day of May 2024.
Very good.
All right. So we have a motion to adopt this proclamation. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. All those in favor? It's a 5-0 vote.
Very good. Thank you very much. Since this is going to be going out national, can we do a little photo op with you?
You're the first one that's ever wanted to take a picture with us.
I'll give V to Michael. We'll get it to the folks at the National.
Don't be standing over here.
Yes, very good. I don't know. You got one. Thank you very much, Joe. I'm really appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Yeah, he's... All right, we'll move on to the reports. Constitution Law and Department has, Ms. Kim, she has nothing. Okay. Administrator's report, April financial report.
For the month of April, our revenue was, came in at $1,031,202. Our expenses came in at $1,103,447. That left a deficit of $132,145 revenue versus expenses for the month. Our yearly sum for reserve is still at $4,330,487. Property taxes came in at $19,159, which this is not surprising. Most everybody's already paid their property taxes. Loss came in at $361,592. EMS fees came in at $97,792, and vehicle title fees came in at $157,088. That left us a surplus for the year of revenue of $3,758,556, which is 41% over for this time of the year, which is normal for revenue. Expenses was under for the foot of the year about $571,933. This'll go up this time for all our quarterly payments to all of our health departments and animal shelters and all that stuff. So that'll be paid off next month, which puts us about 6% on our budget. And if anybody got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I just want to point out that the revenues right now show that large gap. The real property is the main driver of that revenue, and it's going to continue to drop down as we go through the fiscal.
Correct, correct. I mean, we collected all the...
I think we're sitting here with a big surplus.
Right. We collected in December and January, and that's got to last the rest of the year.
Right.
That loss is pretty close to our record.
Yes, I was looking at that. I was looking at that.
What's that?
Loss is pretty close to our record if it's not a record.
Yeah, it's holding up good. The sales going good. Same vehicle sales, they're still holding strong. We've been debating and asking for inmate crews for the last two to three years. I met with the warden and her captain last week. Their intentions are to have a crew out this coming Tuesday and Thursday, and every Tuesday and Thursday, they're after until they get enough guards to fill in more. Again, we're supposed to have three crews. We discussed that at length. They just don't have the guard staff to get them out right now. But they, their instructions was the county marshal will keep them on less roads. They're 100% work on trash on roads, nothing else. Just trying to get the trash cleaned up.
That'll be a help.
Yeah.
Because we get calls about it.
Yeah, and I got an email from the VITA board yesterday, yesterday. We're, they're looking for another, we needed another member on that board from Hart County. It does have some requirements. You have to have some, you've had to have some interaction on mental health. I mean, you can be a mental health professional. You can be a family member that's had to deal with mental health. It's still a little. But we certainly need some applications for that board, but that's the requirement. He's got to be in the medical field, in counseling field, or have family members that have dealt with mental health. They want you to be familiar with the mental health program. So anybody out there that can register, you're going to meet those qualifications. Please just get in touch with us, and we'll get you an application. Other than that, that's all.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to Chairman's report. I would like to say I hope everyone had a happy Mother's Day. I think that's a pretty significant day in this county and in this state. I mean, and all of these mothers that have raised our county employees, I mean, we've got some good people that work here in this county, and we appreciate these mothers raising their kids right. And, you know, there's still a lot of these mothers in this world today. We see a lot of things on the news that's going on, and, you know, we don't want our children acting like that. But like I said, there's a lot of good women that are mothers in the world today that is, and we're blessed to live in a community where a lot of these reside. So anyway, I just want to say, hope you all had a good Mother's Day Sunday. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have a lot as far as my district, but I would like to, I guess you said it best about mothers. Mothers are very special. A lot of people don't see it, but I've told many people that your mother will love you when nobody does. I promise you, she will. So let's always love our mothers and take care of those. I don't have one anymore. She's gone. But I promise you, I did love her. Outside of that, to my district, the bushhogs are headed our way. I always appreciate the calls as well. So anyway, we're getting that done, and we'll thank Terrell for his meeting to try to get our trash off our roads. It's terrible out there. As Commissioner Dorsey said, it hadn't been done since 2019, a few weeks ago back. So anyway, we want to thank all those that are part of that. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I too want to wish all the mothers like a happy Mother's Day and I hope they had a good day. I want to bring this up. I heard Sheriff talking about it on the radio about, you know, last Wednesday was a busy day for law enforcement, and there was a lot went on. Started in South Carolina, went through South Carolina into Hart County, from Hart County into Franklin County, and there was a lot of activities going on. And I think they had like one of the troopers that had a medical issue or whatever. But anyway, you know, keep your law enforcement in your mind and in your prayers, and appreciate the job that all them do, as well as all our county employees. I appreciate them. And I know Commissioner Bennett touched on the bush hog crews, and I know they're going around. I think I saw them a few days ago, like in Mount Olive up there. But I appreciate what all our county employers do. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. District Four, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, on the Mother's Day, I'll take the opportunity to give a special thanks to my mother and both of my grandmothers. Thank the Lord they're both still living and here today. And those women shaped my life individually, and I do appreciate them. And I could sit up here and talk all night about them and still wouldn't do them justice for what they've done for me. And also my wife, who puts up with our three crazy kids. I don't know how she does it, but she was put on this earth by the Lord to take care of them kids. And echoing what Commissioner Teasley was talking about last Wednesday, thoughts, prayers, go out to that trooper. And last I heard, he was recovering. Is that correct?
Yeah, he's out of hospital now.
And appreciate, you know, all the law enforcement, first responders. And, you know, we hate that they have to be involved in things like that. I mean, it just seems like the world gets crazier every day. And I'll just say that on that high-speed chase, I hope that individual gets swift and I guess the justice that he deserves, and it comes in a timely manner. Other than that, got the graduation coming up for our seniors at the high school. Just want to wish every single one of them the utmost in their future. Got some bright individuals coming out of the high school this year, and just wish them much success in their life, as they're about to find out that real life is about to start. And that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move to District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
I want to echo the same sentiments about mothers. I mean, mothers are special people. I'm fortunate to have mine and very blessed to have a great one. There's days I wish I could talk to my grandmothers, but both of those have since passed on. I also want to echo sentiments of the other commissioners. There were a lot of people's lives that were put in harm's way last week on the interstate. And the Sheriff's Department has set up a fund, I think it's a Pinnacle Bank for this child that was severely injured. They didn't do a GoFundMe thing because the family's done that, but a GoFundMe account, they get a percentage of it, and they wanted to have all the money going to this child. So anybody that can help out for that would be really appreciated, I feel sure, by the child's family and the child. And one other thing too about the Class of 2024, you know, when this class graduates, that will be probably the last time some of their classmates see some of their classmates, because people go in different directions after graduation. I'm a high school football official, and every Friday night when I get captains before the game for the coin toss, I always tell those guys, this is the best time of your life. Enjoy it. Because once you put that cap and gown on, as Commissioner Brown said, the real world sets in the next day. So kudos and congratulations to those graduates of the Class of 2024. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank all of you. We'll move on to old business, 12 A-Bid Award for fire turnout gear.
You got the package of bid tabs involved in business. We have made way to those with the fire chief, captain Smith, the two lawyers that came in with samples of their goods. It was a fairly long process setting that night, and the captain and the fire chief and myself agreed with recommendations going both bids.
I make a motion. We're good with their recommendations.
Second.
All right, I made a motion, Mr. Brown's second. Any discussion?
Just for the record, that's William, Fire Apparatus.
Right.
All right. Would we be able to use that CARES Act money to do this, since the delivery is in time instead of splosts?
I'll have to look and see where we're at. I've already turned in the reports on what this budgeted out for. I'll just have to look and see what I can change.
Because I think it meets the criteria, does it not?
Yeah, it does.
So if the delivery time is like what they're saying in here, I think that's an opportunity that we need to take advantage of.
I'll take a look at it and see.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
I just, all right, so we're going to put that in the motion, if the funds are there. If we can do it that way, go that way with CARES Act versus splosts.
If the funds are there, I mean, I thought it'd been pretty well, I mean, we're pretty close.
I'll file a final report on what it was all budgeted for, but I can go back and see if you can change it.
Yep, I mean, that's the problem with it.
Well, if we can, let's do it. I mean, that's $200,000 or so we'll save.
Do we have to make a motion or do we just agree to it?
The number is front of me. I can't give you a precise answer.
Can we? So you're saying contingent?
Yeah, if we can take the money out of CARES Act and save the splosts money, that's more money that the fire department has to buy more turnout gear and other supplies, because we're going to have to buy some more turnout gear, guys.
Right, but again, we'll...
If we can't, we can't.
That money's budgeted, so we'll have to take something out of that budget.
I understand, but if there's any way to do that, let's try to do it. That's all I'm asking.
How are you going to work that, Terrell? I mean, are you just going to look at it and get that back to us?
I'll have to look at it. Plus, like I say, I filed a final report to the feds, so I'll have to see what's involved in changing that report.
We just got done with that last week, wasn't it? Okay. But we can do it on a contingency basis if it's available and can be done. If it's not, it's not.
There you go. That's right.
So you're just going to amend yours to have that contingency?
Yes, that's what I'm, it's going to be a contingency on CARES Act money.
You want to go ahead and run the helmets in with this too?
No, no, the helmets are different.
Because it's on a grant.
Oh, that's right, it's a grant.
I mean, you said it.
I do, I made my second.
All right, you got a motion. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right.
We've got very valuation in there from the fire department. It's the same for both of them. These are for helmets, just through the grant, through... Through the fire department. Our contribution is 52, $2,300 or something. And their recommendation is, again, award that to the lowest bidder.
Fire line.
This fire problem, that's the fire. I don't know. Fire. Fire. Two, seven, second. Fire, 21, nine. Plus, we can add enough helmets on that to cover the whole grant money, which is about another eight helmets, just to use up all the grant money.
All right.
I give a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right, we'll move on to job description, probate court. I make a motion to approve the new job description for the probate court.
Second.
Got a motion back from Commissioner Bennett, second back from Mr. Dorsey. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right, we'll move on down to electronic medical records agreement.
In this, you'll see the... This is only about... This is... This is the same thing. There's already got enough to come back to give it, to cement it, to come back. This manual payment, fifteen thousand, twenty hundred a year, or a lot more, three years, three years. So it's got them to make their... So it's the way three years, it is good, and then ten more years, fifteen thousand a year, only existing contract.
Hey, Terrell, some people's texting me, wanting you to turn the mic on, they can't hear you.
Might be off.
Well, the monthly payment, the monthly payment's same as the annual payment, so is it? Yeah, so is it?
You can pay it by phone, you can pay it by email.
I don't think so.
Right. I don't think so. I mean, it looks like to me they would give it a reduction there if you just pay it upfront. Well, I see that, but...
But it just means the contract, you add this into it, and it's going to be a little more... Whether the contract works out.
Make a motion, we adopt this amendment to the contract.
Second. Was there any reason why it wasn't on the original? Did they not think they were going to need this software?
I don't think it was...
I think it was the case, once they got in, the legislature called in, and they decided all the things were coming out of the... I mean, for about...
It will help them out.
The contract is part of the prison. It might be a little hard to do. Um, we're going to continue on records.
And I guess now it does not fall on us per se, it's more on them as far as the liability standpoint of keeping these records.
They'll, they'll, with the contract, they keep all the records, and so we don't, we don't touch them anymore. We just keep them five.
But now we don't have to worry about housing them.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right. We got a motion to second. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. We'll move on down to 2024 archway agreement. This is the same fee we've always paid, $12,000 a year.
Again, you had to offer your position.
Right.
Thought these contracts coming down at the same time, but the contract was standing in the last year.
Okay.
I make a motion to renew the archway agreement. I'll give you a second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussions?
Terrell, since you serve on there, remind me again, how many board members are on archway? Do you remember?
Bill, you might.
About 12.
Twelve. We started out with less than that, and we had a lot of weight.
That's right. That's right. Okay.
Past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, we don't do that. We don't do that. We don't do that. We don't do that. Terrell, our God's representative, John, who's sitting in the place of all the nation, and less than change. And Scott Arden, Bobby Boucher.
Mr. Legger, if you don't mind, that's some good information there. If you could come up here and...
Well, you didn't know we was going to pin you, to make you come up here to...
I appreciate talking to you. Our executive committee started out about just funding partners, and at that time, the only person that had it was the Chamber of Commerce Executive, I think the chairman of the... What we did a few years ago was had that, I think that chairman and all of that, the person that was working executive director, it just makes for better communication. That's the person who's doing the work today. I like to downsize, I don't want to talk, thanks for it. Those that I named, I can remember, Big Bill, Charles, Charles Rice, Ray Backish, this last year.
Excuse me.
Before it was, I started far too late. He was pretty good with the ad community. And 29, IBA, Terrell, with the county, John Persson, Jason Fuller, Wendy McKenna with the folks up there, and Scott Arden. And this year, we had Andy, we had three children, three youth, they were big fighters. Steve Perkins, and that's them, because I can't remember all their names, but Sarge Strickland, one of them, good kids who came every day, and they got Sarge, and Sarge came, but they had vacation, and he showed up there. They're all right, but this year, it's something else.
Is Steve the school system?
Yes, Steve, they go to the school system. Steve Perkins, who's in Career Academy.
That's right.
They also had, when I put it, I don't know what we had, it's in the form, anybody on that, and you sort of have that.
Yeah.
Another Charles Rice, it was, it was...
Right, yeah. I just couldn't remember, I mean, I couldn't remember how many people were on there.
It's a different... So we, just hopefully, we can do the second base each month at the school, you know. Hopefully, if y'all got things, if y'all discuss and done together, working, working these, it may help, help Terrell put forward, and that, put them back. Appreciate everything y'all, what y'all support.
Appreciate it, man.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. Okay. We'll move on to revised application for board appointments. Basically, what you see there is two different forms, and we just want to go with a more colorful, more information form there. That's basically all this is about.
It does?
Right.
It asks for a little more information.
I make a motion to use the revised one.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion?
Man, you may want to put it as a fillable PDF on the website. Is it already on there like that, or?
No, I think it's down there.
Okay. Make it more accessible and easier to read, easier to obtain from us, too, or somebody can just shoot it back to us.
All right. Any other suggestions or questions?
No, not yet. We just, we got a motion and second.
We'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. We'll move on down to bid opening for football gear and photography.
You got for the flag football jerseys, youth size, $19.98, adult size, $21.98. Shapiro is the name brand. Football jerseys, $59.74 for youth, $61.74 for adult, and it is Pro Cook brand. Football pants, $57.25 for youth size, adult size is $59.25, also Pro Cook.
BSN Sports, football jerseys are 35, I mean, 25, and adult size is 25. And then the jerseys are 51 and 51, both for youth and adult. And football pants for youth are 20.75, and adults are 20.75 also. That's it.
All right. My bid's from Go Sports Warehouse. Flag football jerseys are $25, youth size, $25, adult size. Football jerseys, youth size, $35, adult is $35. Football pants, youth size, $25, adult size, $25. So that's your bid from Go Sports. You get a motion to turn these over to the advisory board.
You have a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
I've really got some more to move.
If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote.
There's another one, right there.
All right. We'll move on to new business, 13A, credit for experience sheriff's officer. You got the letter there from the sheriff?
You got the sheriff photograph.
No, we got one from you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's get on.
Yeah, sure. Let's get on.
I don't want you to spill that down.
I'm trying to.
She's getting with the skipping rope, ain't she? Hey, you're my Ben.
You could add it this time, this would be way thicker than what you used to have.
You had to get to that one for a week.
You're going to have to hit those longer, I mean, that.
I was one.
I got a bid from Carew Sports located here in Hartwell, Georgia. Shells, $26, skirts, $21, pom poms, 20. And this Augusta brand.
Oh, well, this is from Varsity Spirit Fashions and Supplies LLC. Shells, $60.95, skirts, $34, pom poms, $25. I think that's it.
Got a motion to turn these over to the advisory board.
Give you a motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote.
I'm going to have to hand him that vote.
A lot of packages.
Now, we'll move on to the photography bid. We give Jeff and Joey and Frank.
What do you think it is, your birthday, Marshall?
No, it's your birthday.
Yeah.
This looks like there's going to be a lot of using it, worse.
I have a bid from Sportography out of Lawrenceville, Georgia. Package A, $24, package B, $23, package C, $19, and package D, $9. Under the additional information, it'll be a 38% donation to the recreation department, which is net. Turnaround time for delivery is two and a half weeks.
Yeah, man. What'd you say the bid was doing? I think this is the same thing he's getting. It's sport photography.
24, 23, 19, and 9.
Yes, it is.
38%.
There you go. I just wanted to make sure they was heard.
The one I have is Strawbridge Studios Incorporated. And it does not say where they're at. Durham, North Carolina. Did you read Alex's package?
Yeah, I just read H1, I read the content.
Okay. Package A was $25, package B, 30, package C, 20, package D, 15, with a 10% donation to the recreation department. It does not specify gross or net. It does say donation will be received within six weeks of sale.
Make a motion, we turn these bids over to the county administrator, Recreation Advisory Board.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. Now we'll move on to credit for experience sheriff's office.
I make a motion, and we approve this request.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. Credit for experience EMS.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Got a motion, Mr. Dorsey, second, Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. We'll move on to public defender budget for fiscal year '24, '25. And that's basically the same thing that's always been done as far as percentage of population or cases, and then...
That 9,000 that went up, was that per county?
No.
Case load.
Yeah, by the cases.
Based on the population difference amount?
Cases.
Case loads. Well, what I saw they was going to do was hire some kind of director, more than that.
Will this be... Will that be like another lawyer?
No.
It does this, Kim.
It says...
They hire another person, will it be a lawyer?
What I read, what I read, it wasn't going to be a lawyer, somebody to distribute the cases to where they could more effectively do them quicker. Just what I read, at a lesser cost than an attorney. I was just asking if all...
Equal case manager specialist.
Right. At $40,000 versus a $70,000 attorney plus, I think it went up to $123,000 benefits and all.
What would be our, well, you don't have any idea of that.
Yes, 23%. $119,278.
Well, I was talking about as far as this special management person.
If you look at the cases for 2023, we're second highest behind Franklin. Look at the average for the last five years, we're in the middle.
We think they're overkilling it in state courts. And so, it becomes probably the highest, like, by all of this, we need to get to state court.
I'm going to make a motion, we go ahead and approve this, because we can't do it any cheaper any other way.
I'll give you a second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion?
Excuse me.
If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a 5-0 vote. All right. Now we'll move on to the revised transit drug and alcohol policy.
This is something that's built out for transit drivers, just on the supply of which is transit data, it's a DOD's policy, they send that any update left to adopt by...
I read through that thing. I didn't know if anybody around here could do all that stuff. I read through that thing, I didn't know if anybody around here could do all that stuff. There's some serious stuff in, a lot of reading. I'll give you a motion to renew it.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote. We'll move on to Library Board of Trustees Appointments. Linda Manning, Kathy Maynard, Susan Knott have served really well on the board and continue to support and to show enthusiasm for the library. Those are the ones that she's, that they're recommended for reappointment. Okay.
I give a motion for...
Wait a minute, and Ms. Mead would succeed Nancy Clark.
Right.
So you, you're gonna reappoint three and then appoint Mead for to succeed Clark.
So, okay, Commissioner Bennett.
My motion was to reappoint the three, in which there's Linda Manning, Kathy Maynard, and Susan Knott.
But there's four, is where Ms. Mead.
She's gonna be... The new point to succeed Nancy Clark.
Just add the Ann Mead.
And Miss Nancy Clark to succeed Ms. Mead.
Vice versa.
Right, Ms. Mead would succeed Nancy Clark.
Okay. All right, is that your motion there?
That's my motion.
We got a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown.
I already...
Seconded, I believe. And any other discussion?
I'd just like to thank Nancy for her service, not just here but through our county, and her and her family and our thoughts and prayers.
Sure, I, I'll go along with that also.
And me too, I think the whole board agrees with that.
Yep.
Commissioner Brown?
I think she's been there since they started, is that right?
Her and Emily Gunnels have been on there a long time too, wasn't Emily on that board? Emily Gunnels, yeah.
But, yes, we do appreciate Ms. Clark for the years of service on the library board. All right.
Motion and second.
All right, five oh vote. All right, now we move on to thirteen F, homestead exemption discussion. Commissioner Dorsey requested this be on the agenda, I'll turn the floor over to him at this time.
So several years ago, we were approached by quite a few citizens to explore the possibility of putting an increased homestead exemption on the ballot for those sixty-five and older. We ran numbers and we were concerned about what it would do with our revenue. And at the time, the request was for ten thousand dollars in addition to the two thousand that's already there for state. We opted to go with five K with the commitment that we would look at this several years down the road, and I think now is the time to, to look at adding that other five as a referendum in November. I know that there's some state stuff that will be going on the ballot too, with increasing the personal homestead exemption from two thousand to four thousand for those, everybody. But what I would request is that we fulfill our obligation when we committed to looking at this later on, that we go back and put on the ballot an additional five K in a referendum to be held in November for those sixty-five and older to help offset some of the property tax burden on them.
Are you putting that in form of a motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and I'll open the floor up for discussion. I agree, I remember we were going to look at this, but I don't know that this is the right time. We're further in debt now than we were then, and, you know, we've already given, given a five thousand dollar homestead exemption. We've got young people living in this county that are struggling to make it also. If we're gonna do something, if we got this money to be able to do that, let's give it to everybody, and as far as, you know, adjusting the millage rate or something. I've got a heart for elderly people, I, you know, but, but this is a time when the housing market, we've looked at, and, and the expense of that, we, we see the groceries that's at a thirty percent inflation rate, so... I, I just, you know, if we're gonna help one group, we need to help every, oh, everybody.
There's stuff at the state level that will help everybody, but we, as a board, made a commitment that we would come back and look at this at a later date. And when you look at our financial situation, we're in the best financial shape that we've ever been. You talked about LOST revenues earlier today at three hundred and sixty-one thousand, which is, I think, the second highest month we've ever had. The impact on this is not gonna be that significant based off of what Terrill calculated for me today.
Terrill, when's the digest come out?
So, you know, I have an issue with, with that, with us, you know, we're, we're talking about something and we haven't seen the digest yet. I do agree with Commissioner Sayer, you know, with it being level playing field, if we're gonna give a tax break, I'd love to see it for everybody. You know, if there's a tax break, I'm gonna be the first one in line. I mean, I wanna give a tax break as much as we can to everyone that we can. Unfortunate part of government is it takes money to, to run this thing, and, but, you know, I'm, I'm the staunchest proponent for lesser taxes. However, I do wanna see taxes being evenly distributed across all ages, all property owners. You alluded to the younger generation. Things are a lot different now for someone trying to start, start a family and buy a house. Wages may have increased some, but they've not increased near as much as the cost of living, the cost of housing, cost of childcare. We're, we're in a different world, we were twenty, thirty years ago. And, and also with us, we guess we're in great financial shape, but I, I worry with us, we do not have the accessibility and availability to print money here, like our national government seems to be spending, you know, out of control, but they have a fall safe. And we, we are not adding any new revenue streams, to my knowledge, but we have added some substantial debt. So, yes, you know, am I for a, a tax break, absolutely, but I, I would like to see it across the board for everybody, more fair tax, if you would. And also, I, I'd like to revisit this. I know you mentioned that the board committed, I, I don't think I was on that board.
You were not.
So I would be the one, I guess, kind of alienated from that.
I think everybody's missing the point here at age sixty-five. People over sixty-five are, the majority of them's on fixed incomes. They're not this younger generation that we're, here, here speak of, that's able to work, be successful and so forth. The ones over sixty-five are budgeted, very budgeted, and this is the reason you give them tax breaks. And I think if you look throughout the other counties throughout the state of Georgia, you see the same thing, that you gotta reach age sixty, age sixty-five to get those breaks. I hadn't heard of them giving any teenagers tax breaks lately, so...
Well, I'm not mentioning teenagers, I'm, I'm talking about young families, you know, we're talking thirties, forties, and on fixed income. I mean, last time I checked, if you're making eighteen to twenty-five dollars an hour and you only get forty hours a week, that's pretty much fixed as you can go. So they're, they also are kinda hinged on the fact that their income's fixed.
Keep in mind, gentlemen, I think we're missing the point a little bit here. This board is not going to make this decision. This decision will be made by the voters in November on a ballot in a referendum. We're simply giving the taxpayers of this county who elected us and put us in this position to make these decisions, giving them the opportunity to make this choice. If this is what they want to do, so be it. If this is not what they want to do, so be it, I will accept it either way. I am simply following up on a commitment that we made when we looked at this, that after a few years, we would come back and take a look at it. That's the commitment that four to five commissioners made when we did this, and that's all I'm asking is...
But we have the state, the, the legislature, they've already passed one.
Understand, let me finish.
And we could be passing another one.
There, there will be other...
We can't control the state.
Referendums there, but when we make a commitment, it's our honor and duty to fulfill that commitment. And Commissioner Brown, I agree, you were not on the board at the time, and I'm just, now's the time that we're in the best financial shape we've ever been, yes, we do have some debt, but we're not talking about a significant impact here to our overall budget, based off the twenty-twenty-three numbers that, that we're running.
How, how long has this been since we, uh, got the five thousand dollars?
Two years.
Two years.
Twenty twenty-one.
I'd also like us to read, or, or not read visit, but visit, you know, some counties do a lock-in. And I was talking to a commissioner in northwest Georgia, and how they, how they did it is, essentially, he is on the same property for twenty years, his property tax was locked in at that rate. I don't know if that's our silver bullet or answer, but I did like, you know, how that was locked in and will never go up on him. And it seemed to be working very well, it was, it was a lot larger county than we were.
So they don't do evaluations?
I guess, they have to, but it stays that...
How you get locked in?
If you go and buy a piece of property, if you buy a piece of property today, it goes on the digest for what you paid for it the first year, or first or second year, I'm not sure.
So he's still paying on what he, I think it was in eighty-five when he purchased property, he's, he's paying based off of that.
And it don't change until you sell the property?
The financial impact, Terrill, correct me if I'm wrong, what you calculated today to the county budget would be a little over thirty thousand dollars based off of twenty-twenty-three number, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three digest.
How much?
A little over thirty thousand. It was, I'll tell you what it was. Thirty thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And that's everything, that's personal property and increase in the homestead exemption. If those pass, there's no guarantee they're gonna pass.
Our people got...
And that's a statewide referendum, that's not a local referendum, and what I'm proposing would be a local referendum.
And that's, that's, I guess, my hangup, is the state, the state referendum being out there. And I don't want us to be giving, giving this turnaround and raising the millage rate next year.
You won't have to raise the millage rate next year.
Well, I mean, we don't have a silver, a silver, not silver, but we don't have a crystal ball here, we don't know. But I, I have no idea on the figures, I mean, I haven't talked to you about any figures and talked to you about this. So you're telling, you're saying that if this passes, we're only looking at thirty thousand dollars total missing? How many people do we have over the age of sixty-five that live in the county?
That's the parcels, that would be homestead parcels?
It would only be homesteaded parcels, it would not be, somebody over six...
Is that the number of homestead?
So somebody over sixty-five years of age, if they own five parcels, they would not be eligible for that homestead exemption break, they would only be for the one that there's actual their homestead where they get the homestead exemption, that's it, that would not, nothing else would be impacted.
That was the question I was asking, is that the number of homestead exemption parcels?
And that's all it would impact?
That's what the number we're looking for.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred, you said?
He just told you twenty-seven hundred.
So essentially, you're looking at eleven dollar savings a year for those individuals?
It's gonna depend on their value.
You just said thirty-something thousand and there's twenty-seven hundred, unless this calculator's wrong. So maybe we're, we're arguing this, I guess, I mean...
It's not a lot.
Well, plus, we done gave them one now.
I'm just not, I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm just not informed enough to make a well-educated decision tonight, 'cause I mean, just by the numbers, I mean, heck, I mean, we could probably figure out thirty thousand dollars, and it's not gonna really give, it's not gonna give the sixty-five and older much tax relief if you can get eleven dollar credit.
But we made a commitment, we would look at this in a couple years down the road, and that's what I'm following.
But I just don't want us to get in a slippery slope where...
Well, nobody's not committed to that, Mr. Dorsey, I mean, weird, weird, I mean, this just come up all of a sudden and we're here with no figures.
It didn't come up all of a sudden, I talked to you about this over a week ago, and I said I was gonna put it on the agenda, and I did.
Well, there's no figures here, it's a problem.
With the figures?
I mean, if we could get the numbers here, I mean...
Well, I mean, we don't have to wait till August, don't it, I mean?
Just finish the vote.
You got a motion and a second.
I, I, I understand, but like I said, I, I'd just like to have clarification on what kind of money we're talking about to each individual and how much money out of the county budget, because once this goes, it's gone.
I'd like to figure out how to get rid of property tax altogether, and look at that too.
Yeah, with everybody.
And like I said, some of our younger people are hurting also, is, and, and if we could do something for them. Okay, we do have a motion, say it on the floor, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. All right, three, all opposed. All right, three to two. All right, we'll move on to... Heart County Humane Society Temporary Beer and Wine Permit.
I'll make a motion, we approve this request.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion?
Is, is Councilman Hicks, is he, is he over the Lake Side Resort or is over the Humane Society? So he's represented for Humane Society? Oh, oh, I see.
I think Councilman Hicks does a lot of organizing.
Yeah. I just, you know... That's why I was wondering if he was a music festival or with the Humane Society on that.
All right, any others, discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five health insurance, renew?
That's always good to get a decrease.
Job well done by all involved.
Did they say?
That's right.
Well, I didn't see that in there, reasoning, I was gonna ask you, is that the reason? 'Cause we don't have many, haven't had as many claims, is that what you're saying? But that's a lot of money, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
That's a saving, that's your savings.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I remember last year, same.
That's pretty good planning, too.
Can we get a motion to?
I'll make a motion, we signed the, uh, renewal contract with the reduction stated that gives a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar year savings.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh eight. All right, next is moratorium on mobile home and recreational vehicle parks.
When, when was this one, the one, this currently, when, when was it adopted?
Two thousand.
Why was, I had a co, okay. My question was, was, you know, why, why did they vary so much on the RV versus the mobile home? Seemed like there was a lot of stipulations put on the mobile home part, but the RV was not. Probably one, yeah. But it got, it has to be approved by Health Department, though, in order for it to-
Well, my thing is, can we not just work on this ordinance without doing the moratorium?
No, we need a moratorium in place to stop it, so we can get a clean start.
So you're saying we can't revisit the ordinance?
Well, said the, the po, the mobile home part does, but the RV part does not, 'cause they have to perform a site plan that has to be approved by the board of commissioners, but it, but it's only you, it's not us, and that's what, yeah, and that's why I didn't like that it was not, if they did bring a site plan, we don't have a zoning board or any kind of planning board, so this is kind of our, you know, our planning board, so the mobile home part, we could look at it, at the site plan, discuss it, most of the five of us. RV, I mean, as long as you meet the requirement, requirements just goes to you and gets signed off. My only thing is, we, you know, I would ask each of y'all, what's our plan, because I don't want us to add it to the stack of moratoriums and us just kick it down the road, I think this is something we can fix pretty quick. Do we wanna write this in the House, or do we want to seek help on this?
No, we do it in the House, we don't wanna do it outside, you know, it'll take you a lot longer to get it done.
That's something that, um-
When the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission was engaged to do an ordinance about twenty-five years ago, it was a disaster.
How about Oxway?
I think we need to be the ones to do it, we're the representatives, it's our job.
Sprang it up, I mean-
I'll make a motion, we enact a ninety-day moratorium on mobile home and recreational vehicle parks to give us an opportunity to update our ordinances and get them current.
Can we add that bill one-time moratorium? I mean, I'd like to see this thing ended in ninety days.
You just gotta get it done.
But I think we need to have a commitment.
That's why I did ninety days, that's three months, that's plenty of time.
Yeah, I don't mind, I'm not for the moratorium whatsoever, 'cause I've seen the explosion in mo, RV parks, but I think they're, they're done, because the people are already selling them, they see they're not, they're not gonna be beneficial. Well, they're selling them before they even get them built.
All right, any other discussion?
I still would like for us to, I'm fine with us doing in-house, but, you know, let's, let's at least get the options of seeking some help here, I mean, we're putting a lot on our council with these different moratoriums, different ordinances, I mean, we should be able to get this done in nine days, I mean, it's just gonna be a simple update. 'Cause, I mean, it seems like, to me, the RV portion is the, the biggest, you know, portion that we need to tackle here. The mobile home seems pretty strenuous, maybe with a few things.
But there's some lot size changes in there, too, that need to be updated.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
All right. Any other discussions, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four, any opposed?
So.
Commissioner Bennett opposes. All right. We come to the part of the agenda where we have public comment, is there anyone that would like to speak for the commission tonight? As far as county business, no direct comments toward commissioners, but if you'd like to have an issue talked about, we're here to listen. All right, if there's no one for public coun, uh, comment, we'll move into executive session. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we exit into executive session, personnel litigation.
Give a second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh eight.